Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
First item on the agenda is citizen input, and we have a couple topics today. One of them from Topher Laws referring to our decision for the redesign of Worrell Park. So there's questioning of the choice adding parking spots and the choice of planning on courthouse expansion. So I want to thank Mr. Laws for providing this input, and there have been a few people engaged in this topic. Second, it looks like in the room, Mr. Doug Hoshek. This will be an opportunity. Please join us at one of the tables.
Okay, I've had my second shot, so I'm not gonna put this on if you don't mind if I can breathe and talk. Right, I'm here this morning to discuss with you the CWPP that you created in 2021. You've got information here, and what I've done is I've taken my company, Portland Woolen Mills, where we run our business out of our home, and made an example of it on our website. You'll see everything on there. We have an ad in the Sun River Magazine talking about what we're doing. We're creating basically a firewise program with the National Firewise Protection Agency, and it's not well received in Sun River because they have always refused that we should be able to do that. So the ad speaks for itself. We also ran the same ad, and you've got copies of it in the Sun River Scene. We've also been interviewed in the Cascade Business News with the ad in the environmental section, and article interview, who I am, who Tina is, what we do. And the editor of this happens to be a homeowner in Sun River living with her mom. They have two homes. And the general manager of this lives in Sun River with two homes. Bottom line is, we worked it out with you that the trees could be removed based on the 2015 CWPP, the canopy space six to eight feet apart. And we started getting traction, and Hugh approved trees being removed. They were being removed. He asked me to hold off and do the rest of it when we got into our six-year cycle because he'd have the funding for it. He retired. James Lewis took over. I had James Lewis and Chief Moore come out to review everything. We stood under the trees. James Lewis said, "It's six, eight feet on the trunk, Doug, not the canopy." Tim corrected him. I corrected him. No, the canopy. Okay? I kept sending emails. When are you going to cut these trees down? As they started being in the neighborhood doing things. Nobody would respond to me. We went and had an issue with the tree cutters. They parked their trucks in front of the stop sign. We couldn't see around the corner. That's the only reason I wound up talking to them. I saw them cutting a bit of brush, but not the trees. I asked them, I said, "You know, you guys are going to be doing this. The trees are marked. They're tagged. I know Brent very well, and we want to make sure that you don't shred branches and pine needles on the grounds." We worked that out. They go in the back of the truck. We want to save the flammable mulch from burning. We want to save the natural grasses. We want to save the wildflowers, especially because the bees love them. And we actually water the wildflowers. We planted our whole front yard in wildflowers. This guy turns around to me, and he goes, "Fuck you." And I go, "Excuse me?" He repeated it. He says, "I'll blow them any fucking way I want." His three buddies are laughing. Tina overhears it. I back away. The guy's coming towards me. I'm wearing a mask. I say, "You stop right there. You're not wearing a mask." Tina gets on the phone and calls the police. We go back to our driveway to wait for the police. The guy's walking down the street on his cellphone. I'm sorry for the language. "Get me Patty. Get me Patty right now. This guy's a fucking nutcase." Okay, James Lewis, Brad Skinner, they won't talk to me. They shut me down, put me on radio silence. Nobody will remove the trees. They're blowing bark all over the place. It's extremely flammable. I found the testing on flammable mulch. It also led me from that testing with the Forest Service to a gentleman who heads up NIST, National Institute of Standard Technologies. He and I have been working together. He did seven studies. The organization did seven studies in California. I gave them to Phil. Now my website page has the paradise on it, and everything we did, all the newspaper interviews, all the TV interviews, it's all there out in the open. The problem and reason why I'm here today is I have a meeting with my attorney next week. We're going to have to file a lawsuit and get this straightened out because they refused to talk to me. They allow this person to swear and yell at me. The only person in Sun River that communicated with me was Corey two hours later with an email. I apologize for the unprofessional person, Doug. If it ever happens again, call me directly. I think you know how we're connected. So the problem with you guys is your CWPP in 2015 says the canopies must be six to eight feet apart. Sun River on their own, Patty and whoever else, in your new one, changed it to the trunk is six to eight feet apart. They did it deliberately because James gave it away anyway.
I want to thank you for your testimony. Yeah, we're going way long here. So I understand. So yeah, a couple items you shared with us today referring to the either the trunks themselves or the canopy. And yeah, you've had your opportunity. Thank you very much for the input. I did review your website. I saw that notification through the email process. Thank you very much for joining us. I understand this is, you know, very much a...
I came here to share this with you because I do not want you, the county, or anybody individually to have to get involved in this with them, with my lawyer. Their lawyer's letter came in and basically called me a hazard. Okay?
Thank you very much.
So gloves are off in this. You know how long we've been doing it?
Yep, I do.
And you have been incredibly supportive. You've got the stuff. Patty, I saw you yesterday at the Chamber of Commerce. Portland Woolen Mills is coming out of the closet.
Thank you very much for your testimony today.
I'm from Pendleton Woolen Mills.
Oh, is that competition?
I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't know. Pendleton makes a lot of blankets.
Okay, are there any, is there anybody else in the Zoom possibly with a hand raised function for public testimony? And are there any phone calls unidentified? Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to our next agenda item, consent agenda. We have four sets of minutes on this one.
So move approval of the consent.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair of Votes, yes. To the action items, item number five, deliberations for marijuana housekeeping text amendments. Tanya Salzman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner. I'm here today, as you noted, today is the date set for deliberations on the marijuana housekeeping text amendments. Let's see, to review kind of the past process, a work session with the board was held on March 22nd, followed by a public hearing on March 31st. During that hearing, the oral record was closed and the written record was left open. I provided a brief memo that summarized some of the testimony received during the hearing. In addition, nothing has been received in that written record open period. So there's been no additional information provided to staff on that matter. I'm going to just briefly go over, I just want to clarify, there was some discussion about the nonconforming use aspect of these text amendments. Essentially, we're taking, we're taking what exists in state statute already and placing it into our local code. So I just want to clarify that. We're not necessarily making a judgment, as it were. We are just reflecting that, making it, closing that loop and making it in our local code as well as state statute, state statute, excuse me. So that means that marijuana, existing marijuana businesses who are licensed, they now become nonconforming uses, and they are treated like all other nonconforming uses in the county pursuant to the nonconforming use chapter, which I just lost the number of, but it's listed. So essentially, these businesses are treated the exact same in terms of their ability to alter their permits and so on. And I just wanted to clarify that, that even if we did not pass these, if these text amendments didn't exist, that state statute would still apply. But we're trying to kind of put it all in one place to clarify. I'm not sure if Adam or Dave has anything on the legal side to add to that, but those are my comments there.
So...
I suppose not.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
There's acknowledgement.
Just one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. So yeah, that's, that's the summary of the deliberations in the open record period. At this point, the board can deliberate, and/or they can deliberate, close those deliberations, propose a first and second reading if they choose to adopt by emergency. And I will note that the ordinance provided in the packet is by emergency. If the board elects not to do emergency, I can draw up a nonemergency version right away and kind of bring it back to the board as soon as you need it. And then one just final note, it's more of a clerical note. There was one, one chapter, Chapter 18, 116, which is, that's kind of contains the meat of most of these. There was a placeholder for a date, an effective date, and right now, the current version has been modified to reflect today's date. If this gets continued to another date, I will just, staff will modify that as appropriate.
Okay, thank you so much.
To the emergency, we all have to vote for it, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
So at this time, this is the deliberations on this topic. Any comments or statements?
Well, I'm glad we left it open, and we didn't receive any comments, but we did give the public an opportunity. So I think that's really important. So thank you, Tanya, for pointing that out.
Thank you.
And I'm glad people had the opportunity to come and provide public testimony at our last, our March meeting, and, and have the option to provide written testimony. I definitely, I appreciate that there's a lot of concern about these changes. I definitely, I appreciate that there's a lot of concern about these changes, but they are essentially just implementing the ballot measure that the voters passed in November. So I don't see a whole lot of reason, given the limited amount of public input that we've gotten to, to keep this open much longer or provide additional opportunities. I feel like we've done, done a good job of providing opportunities for the public to engage in this topic.
So a couple thoughts, the non-conforming use, you know, that will be a topic for the future. You know, if there's a crop on farmland and the state law allows it, and now we've gone through quite a roller coaster of decisions in Deschutes County over the last half a dozen years. I just want to, you know, maybe put a little bit of legislative direction from the board's point of view about this. My understanding and my, I do support, you know, if there's smell mitigation referring to indoor growing of a mature crop, that no adverse impacts would be, you know, we could fit into that no adverse impact. So then it steps into setbacks and, you know, just the structures on the property, the number of trips that would be generated on the property, which is different than a field of growing grass, cut once or twice or three times a year from year-round operation. So, you know, for these existing growers, the existing business owners out there, you know, I'm supportive of having that discussion and really respecting that, you know, no adverse impacts for, for non-conforming uses can be accepted, for whatever that is, you know, just the fact that, yes, we'll have this discussion in the future for the existing authorized growers. So at this time, if there's no opposition, we can proceed, it looks like. It looks like there's support for this package. I will close deliberations.
I mean, I would also just say that I foresee that we are going to have continued challenges in, you know, public, public desires and, you know, public, you know, issues related to the species cannabis broadly because, you know, it's important for everyone to understand that hemp is a federally authorized crop, which we, the county has no authority to restrict people from growing. And a lot of, I do believe that a lot of the people who have concerns about marijuana growing operations in the county are, you know, are in, are in a number of cases really concerned about hemp, which these, these code changes and the ballot measure do nothing to impact. So, so, yes, while we're, you know, specifically focused today on these text amendments, and, you know, I think we've done a good job of implementing the will of the voters in, in that ballot measure. I just, you know, I want, I want everyone to, you know, be aware that there's going to continue to be, I believe that there will continue to be a lot of conflicts around the growing of cannabis species crops in the county.
Referring to hemp?
Yeah.
Well, and, yeah, I will acknowledge that also. I mean, yeah, the hemp, hemp fields are a different matter, totally.
Yeah.
If I may, provide just a little bit of insight about hemp, that is something that's on our radar in the Planning Division here, and we have planners kind of working on, doing a little research about what the, kind of what the landscape is about hemp, so that the board can look forward to in the next several months, some sort of discussion. That's in its infancy at the moment, but it is definitely on our radar.
Thank you, Tanya.
Okay.
Well, it's almost planting time, and I saw so many hemp fields that were not processed whatsoever last year, so it's going to be interesting to see. And to remind the world that Deschutes County does have one of the shortest growing seasons of the state. And it really isn't that conducive to a crop that really needs to mature and then be harvested. So, you know, there's still snow on black bute, and you know not to put your tomatoes out until that snow is gone, or you could waste a lot of effort. So I just, you know, it's going to be interesting. I haven't really seen any planting yet, I've seen some fields that have been cleaned up, but no planting yet.
Okay, so as I say, that's deliberations, so stepping from deliberations to proposed first and second reading and discussion about adopting by emergency. Are there any thoughts? So I'll say, I support emergency adoption with 30 days implementation, so that would be first and second reading by emergency with 30 days implementation instead of 90.
And I support that also.
I think the language of emergency is, is not necessarily needed, but I also, I also think that we've done a good job with our public process for this, for these amendments, and that adopting, adopting them sooner than later will not change anything for any of the involved parties. So, you know, as Tanya said, you know, essentially, if we didn't make these changes now, state statute would require all of these things regardless. So I, I won't oppose moving forward with emergency adoption.
So would you lean towards emergency adoption first and second reading, or the other way, I guess? Not emergency?
I will, I'll, if, if, if my colleagues want to, want to move forward with emergency adoption, I'll, I'll support that.
It will be six months from the election, so I do think it seems like it's timely.
Okay. So, yeah, so then if there's a motion for ordinance number 2021-004...
Are you making a motion then? Or are you saying...
Well, I mean, I'll clarify my intention, is emergency, first reading, adoption by emergency with the intention of 30-day emergency implementation. So this would be a first, yeah, I might make the motion for that first reading.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been first and seconded, I guess, for the clarity. As the Chair, I did make the motion. So this will be the first reading, ordinance number 2021-004. I guess, yeah, let's vote on that, so then, then we'll do the first reading, so...
Can I get clarity?
Yeah, please.
Are you moving first and second reading, adoption by emergency with a 30-day effect date?
Oh, there you go. Yeah, so that...
If that's what you're doing, then the motion would be moving first and second reading, adoption by emergency with 30-day applicability or...
Yep, yeah. Okay, so by emergency, I'm referring to first and second reading. Okay, thank you very much.
And if you can clarify the, the ordinance to reflect that, but that would be your motion...
The one, one time we'll vote on it to be implemented 30 days from now, and so we will do first and second.
Right, and that's by title only, I suspect.
Yep. Okay, so I'll clarify that motion then, so first and second reading, I'll move first and second reading of ordinance number 2021-004 by title only, declaring an emergency to be effective 30 days from now. That's more clear, huh? There we go.
Okay, and I'm seconding that. Clarity.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So this is first reading of ordinance number 2021-004, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning, to incorporate housekeeping changes that ensure that the Deschutes County Code is consistent with the results of the no vote on ballot measure 9-134, and to provide clarification of existing regulations regarding marijuana and declaring an emergency. So this will be second reading, ordinance 2021-004, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning to incorporate housekeeping changes that ensure that the Deschutes County Code is consistent with the results of the no vote on ballot measure 9-134, and to provide clarification of existing regulations regarding marijuana and declaring an emergency effective 30 days from now. So at this time, we would adopt, move to adopt.
Correct, you need a motion adopted.
Is there a motion for adoption?
I move adoption of ordinance number 2021-004 by emergency.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, so with that, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. So that's one step in the process. Thank you, Tanya, for keeping us organized there, and Dave for the clarification.
Thank you, and I'll provide an updated ordinance to reflect that 30 days. I'll provide that to the Board Secretary.
Yep, for signature, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
At this time, I'll call it item number six. I guess we lost our numbering at some point, but we'll convene at the governing body of the 911 Service District. This was an item mentioned on Monday, so this is consideration of board signature of a resolution increasing FTE at the 911 Service District. Dan Emerson is on the agenda for this. Good morning.
Hi, everyone. This should just be the resolution to increase for a operations supervisor, I believe Sarah Crossbite was able to talk to you guys about this on Monday. It is to support operations, I think it's a reinstatement of a position. And if Deschutes County 911 is on there, I'll let them speak a little bit more to it. Financially speaking, it's going to be covered FY21 with vacancy savings, and then FY22, it would need to be covered by some other funding source. Deschutes County 911 does have quite a bit of contingency and reserves at this point to cover this position for FY22.
Great, thank you. And is Sarah Crossbite available?
I'm here. Good morning, Commissioners. Do you have any follow-up questions for me on this?
So one question I would have is just, yeah, future, you know, future funding for this. So this is basically part of the base rate built into the district is, would be my assumption, the next few years out is what I'm referring to.
Correct. I mean, with our plan that we have in place and what we've been building, we would have the funds and our personnel to cover this. Unfortunately, we continue to run with our vacancies every year, as you know. We have four vacancies right now that we're going to be working to fill, that I anticipate just kind of with our turnover and how things go, we will always still kind of always average about two every year. That seems to be our average between two and four on a yearly basis with turnover and just people deciding to change career paths or struggling with the training process. But, yeah, we do have the funds to cover this position moving forward without touching the rate.
And then operation supervisor, you kind of see it as more that long-term position for a, for an operator.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Good. Any questions?
No questions. I'll, I'll just say that based on the information that I, that has been presented to us and that we've reviewed, this seems like a really great opportunity to ensure that we have adequate supervision on the floor and at dispatch, and also to make sure that we're keeping our systems up to date and, and doing what we need to do to make that, you know, make the system technologically and administratively work as, as best possible.
Well, and I know there was a user group meeting yesterday, all the agencies are available, the management of the agencies to join us, and it sounds like the, the culture of recruiting is real positive right now, as in, these are good, long-term, public safety careers, finding the right person and just getting them plugged in and keeping them going. So it sounds like we're in an upswing generally in, you know, the FTE staffing of that, that call taker and dispatchers on the floor.
Sarah, because you're always looking for special people, you know, the first they can type 45 words a minute, and you start out with a couple hundred, listening to that breakdown yesterday, how they go through all the processes, and it does take someone who can handle, what is it, immense pressure, and yet think clearly, and know that sometimes you have to adapt with what you're, you know, the decisions, that you're helping that frantic person on the other line. So, yes, definitely, I think it's a great time to be looking and getting someone hired by July 1st. Thank you for your forward-thinking leadership.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Go ahead.
I move that we approve board signature on Resolution 2021-021, approving an increase of 1.0 regular duration FTE within the Deschutes County 911 fund.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare? I mean, Chang, as I'm looking at you.
You can vote first.
No, no, you go ahead.
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Dare?
I used to do that, so thank you, Tony, for doing that, yes. Makes me feel better.
And Chair votes, yes.
I know, could you look at somebody and say something?
Whoops. Okay, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thanks, Chair.
So at this time, we are at 9:30 with a 10 o'clock time certain COVID update, so we have an opportunity for other items for a few moments today. I will acknowledge, yeah, the user group meeting yesterday, Commissioner Dare joined, so this is a Zoom call that I've offered to be involved in over the years. It is a public meeting recorded, so, you know, a Commissioner always could join. As I say, it's the police chiefs and fire chiefs, the agencies at the table. It was mentioned about the recruiting, the fact that there's always a few open positions there, so it's an ongoing effort at all times, but it was real positive kind of statement and culture of the organization. I was able to bring City Councilor, Ben City Councilor Megan Perkins on the floor during Telecommunicators Week, I might have mentioned this last week, but, so she was able to see the operations in the facility, and we were able to thank the, the staff that was on duty at the time. So, yeah, 911 is doing their thing. Also mentioned that, you know, there's budget choices coming up for the future investments in the digital radio system, just the coverage and functionality. I noticed during the meeting, it was mentioned, you know, the future investments being, having a radio system that's more powerful. And just technically, it's kind of the opposite. You want it to be more sensitive for the, for the handheld devices, so you really don't want more power, you want more sensitivity and balance in the system. So the investments to be made in the future, really optimizing the system, so, just my takeaway from yesterday.
I just thought it was fascinating, though, how many people they'd start out with, a couple hundred, and then you're down to 20 when you, you know, go through all the different processes, so. But, oh, today is that very special day to acknowledge and recognize and thank our administrative staff that keeps us together, and thank Sharon, Megan, and Samantha for all the work they do for our team. So, anyway, it is a national, very important day, and thank you.
Well, great, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Yes, they said you could send them chocolates or roses.
Chocolates or roses, there we go. I was able to attend the Sun River-Lapine Economic Development Board meeting, it was a Zoom meeting also yesterday, a good group of people. A lot of exciting things happening in the area. Lapine itself, the land use, the homes being discussed, they're working on a quarterly newsletter, you know, just a great sense of excitement in the, in the community right now. As I say, housing is the natural fit, people are wanting to move to the area and looking for the housing, so then it's always that balance of creating jobs, traded sector, commercial activity, you know, just vibrant community. So a lot of excitement at the table yesterday also on that topic.
Oh, and I did go to Sun River yesterday, actually went there in person, kind of visited the community, and their new magazine, I picked up a couple extra copies for everybody. It's really amazing, and did you get one over there?
Well, this was provided by Mr. Houshak today.
Oh, good. Good, well, I have a couple extra if you need anymore. But it was great, the Chamber was kind of working on their website, which is going to be probably updated completely in the next week or so. And they've really done a lot of amazing work on that, just bringing their public face to a higher level. It's really quite, quite nice, so a lot of people have really stepped up.
Well, and the Chamber of Commerce in Sun River and the Lapine Chamber of Commerce are definitely part of, you know, the activity, the business, representing businesses in the Sun River-Lapine area, so that's a partnership along with the EDCO efforts in the area. Another note, last night, there was a community meeting, Deschutes River Recreation Home Sites, and it was by our, our code enforcement group, so the concept is welcome code compliance. There's, you know, there's just, there's people moving in, setting up, doing a lot of activity right now. Some people are, you know, driving in with an RV, and there's, there's rules about 30 days at a time, or if you're going to stay six months, getting permitted, and just people are wondering what's going on down the street or across the property. So it was a real good community meeting, engaged individuals, our staff did a great job last night. It was code enforcement, environmental soils, and planning, so, I mean, there was a great group that was there last night. We were outside respecting COVID rules, so at about 6:30, the sun was going behind the trees, and then by about 7:45, everybody was done. It was getting cold quick, but we had a real good engaged meeting last night.
Great.
Anything else, Tom? Other items?
I'll just share that tomorrow is Earth Day. The, the environmental... The, the Environmental Center has invited me to make some comments following the screening of a, a film about plastics in our environment, and so my comments are going to focus on the importance of state and local policy in changing how much, how much waste is running through our economy and running through our environment, and I'll touch on some things such as, you know, the adoption of the solid waste management plan last year and how, and how, how forward-thinking that is in terms of waste reduction, and I'll also mention the state, the state bill, SB 562, I believe it is, that the, the recycling modernization bill that the county is supporting, and then just kind of refer people back to previous policy efforts like the, the plastic bag ban that the city abened enacted and then the state enacted shortly afterwards, so. Just to reemphasize to people that state and local policy really does matter in terms of how much, how much plastic is running through our environment and our economy and how much is, yeah, how much is ending up in the wrong places.
Well, I'm thoroughly lost when it comes to the plastic bags now when I go to the store. I really don't know which stores are doing what. You know, I just happen to be driving an electric car with a, a front trunk area that I keep all my bags in, and I grab them, but as I say, some stores are offering bags and some stores aren't right now, so.
Or some, you can bring your own bag in, but they won't touch it, and others will touch it.
COVID has changed that, too.
And then the other thing that people really need to pay attention to is those plastic bags that you're reusing can be like bacteria heavens. You really, I, I feel really, you know, before all this happened, you know, the checkers were, you know, refilling people's bags, but if you don't really wash your bags, you could, you could be carrying a lot of germs, so, yeah, don't use your bags forever, and it's, and yet we still have plastic bags, so what was all that resolution?
Yeah, so, as I say, that's probably a good-
COVID, COVID has-
Yeah.
COVID has resulted in some delays in adoption of certain, certain requirements.
So, yeah, maybe an outreach effort at the current status would be great if you want to mention it tomorrow, because, as I say, I'm thoroughly lost on what, which stores do and what the requirements are right now.
Well, I can tell you who has really nice bags, and you definitely want to use them, you know, as many times as you can, but then again, look and, you know, look inside and realize that maybe you better, at some point in time, get rid of them. Yeah, how do you get rid of all the bags? And one other thing, as far as waste goes, I have no plastic on my dry cleaning if I ever need anything cleaned, and it's, it's always fascinating when I go in there and I see everybody's, everybody's clothes are in plastic, and I'm going like, gosh, well, really think about that. You can make that a standard procedure on your cleaning, just say, no plastic, please, unless it's something really critical and you think it's a good idea, but in a lot of cases, it's really not healthy. I had something antique in a plastic bag, and that was like the worst thing ever for, it was crocheted by my great-grandmother, it's over a hundred years old, and that was the worst thing I could have done to that antique. It's so much better just being out in the air and not being under plastic, so, you know, yeah. Have you ever noticed that, going in?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, the room is like filled with plastic over the, all those clothes.
I can, I mean, just personal story, but yeah, having a long-sleeved shirt dry cleaned, right? So then you carry it out without plastic, and you just brush it up against the car, and then you got a big black mark down the side of your white shirt, so, I mean, I, I think twice about it and make, make sure multiple shirts are inside of a plastic if I do that, but, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's a moment when you have to think about plastic on your dry cleaning.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good, yep, Earth Day tomorrow. So, as I say, we, maybe it's just time for a fifteen-minute break before we get reorganized for eleven, 10 o'clock time certain COVID update. We do have set of slides here today, so let's take a break at this time, fifteen minutes.
Okay, so we're coming back, the Board of Commissioners meeting in preparation for our public health update in a few moments. Whenever we're ready with an interpreter and our staff. We did take a 15-minute break right before this for a lack of agenda items, which doesn't happen too often, but that was good to happen today. So we do have an executive session after this and that one other announcement we talked about, about the Fair Association. So Nahad, if you're available, we can get going a few moments early with a public health update for COVID-19.
Good. Well, as I say, I remember about five, six weeks ago, we thought we might be able to say, you know, do this every other week instead of weekly, and now it's more acute. If we had done that, maybe we wouldn't have.
Yeah, see, there you go. It would have been a choice.
Just ignore it and it goes away.
Right. Yeah, no testing needed, just no presentation, it'll all go away. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Great. I'll wait for your queue, Commissioner.
Oh, please proceed. We're ready to go here.
Okay, so speaking and translation and sharing of slides, all set. Thank you so much for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadra Zodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deshute County Health Services. I have with me Ms. Molly Wells Darling, who is currently serving as Deputy Incident Commander for the COVID-19 response. So with that, let me start off by expressing my gratitude to our health services staff and community partners for really doing a fantastic job of supporting the vaccination rollout in our communities. As well, you are aware with the rising case numbers, it means a great deal of effort and time spent on case investigation and contact tracing, even though it's in a surge protocol modality right now, still dealing with 50, 60 cases a day on average means enormous amount of work and persistence, especially given the general fatigue in our communities. Also, several colleagues contributed to the preparations of these slides, and I'd like to acknowledge them as well. So just starting off with a couple of general announcements, which I believe are important for our community members to be aware of. We do have a free drive-through COVID-19 testing event from an hour ago, 9:00 a.m., to 2:00 p.m. today in downtown Bend at the Ben Lepine Schools Education Center, which is located at 520 Northwest Wall Street. And we will be out there again next week, and this is done in partnership with Oregon Health Authority. And this testing event is open to anyone, no symptoms, no ID are required in order to be tested. And participants, of course, are community members. If they decide to come, they're expected to wear masks. And they can also register in advance online if they would like to do so. The next announcement is around, and Molly's obviously going to unpack this further for us, but just to say that this is a big announcement in that if you're 16 years and older, not only you can start driving, but importantly, you are eligible to get vaccinated against COVID-19. So please register online or call our hotline, but preferably register online as to get in the queue and you'll be contacted to come and get vaccinated. I think our community members are well aware that vaccination is really our only chance to return to some level of normalcy in the near future. So please get vaccinated for yourselves, for your families and friends, and for our community. Okay, this next slide shows the number of new cases by week. Since March 2020 last year, we have over 7,200 cases reported, and unfortunately, 72 people have expired. Last week, we had a total of 394 new cases with a daily average of 56 cases reported. And since Sunday this week, we have had 86 new cases reported thus far. So committee members might be asking, what is really driving the rising case numbers? And I would say that it's really not anything out of the ordinary. It's primarily related to our social behaviors. We are acquiring the virus in gatherings or at work. We come home and interact with our loved ones or friends and neighbors, and we transmit the virus, especially if we're in closed quarters without masks for extended periods of time. Close contact and household transmission continues to be the primary source of infection. We have several outbreaks contributing to the case numbers, and those are due to socializing, generally on work breaks or breaks after work, and of course, not abiding by mask usage and social distancing guidelines. It does appear that from some of the investigations we've done and from what I'm hearing from our team, it does appear that some people are unclear about the signs and symptoms of COVID-19 disease versus common cold or allergies. And I do have a slide which I'm going to come back to. So they might think they have allergies, but then they're interacting with each other, but in fact, they have COVID-19, so they're transmitting the virus. So that's, I think, important to keep in mind. And if you have any questions about this, about your symptoms, please do contact your primary care provider. This next slide is vaccination per age category as of last week. As expected, higher proportion of 65 years and older are vaccinated due to the sequencing parameters that were put in place months ago. Logic would tell us that we should be seeing a shift in case or transmission patterns, and more cases should be showing up in 64 and younger. And in fact, that's what we are seeing. This busy slide that you see in front of you is case rates by age groups. Just for our community members to be aware, looking at rates versus just absolute numbers really helps us standardize the comparisons, and it allows us to compare apples to apples, for example, right? So the bars that you see here are based on weekly rates. And for 20 to 29-year-olds, we see a similar rate as the previous week, which is still quite high. However, we are seeing increasing rates in 30 to 39-year-olds and 10 to 19, so the adolescent age group as well. So this is the general pattern we're seeing, which is consistent with what, like I mentioned, logic would tell us in terms of the vaccination patterns we've seen as well, and the shift in transmission.
Nahad, what was the green line all the way over on the right side of the last slide? That one, yes, where it says six.
I knew I couldn't get that past you, Commissioner.
No, I'm just trying to go like, okay, six. I was just trying to figure out what it was. Are those unknown ages or something?
Yeah, these are, thank you for raising that, Commissioner. These are six cases in 85 and older. Our team is investigating because it's concerning, right? And this is where we see the severe type of disease also show up and unfortunately, some of the mortalities that we've seen. So there is investigation. It is linked to some outbreaks in long-term care facilities. Majority of them have not been vaccinated. Couple of them, we don't have information on. We're still trying to reach them. I would say that, I mean, the numbers are, you know, it's six. It's concerning. We're following up. And in terms of absolute numbers, I mean, there's six people there, and we're following up. It could be part of normal variance. We do know that the virus was introduced in the long-term care facilities through staff. And generally, in long-term care facilities, even nationally, we're seeing some level of reluctance or hesitancy in getting vaccinated. And long-term care facilities in general have not instituted any policies in terms of vaccination for various reasons that we can get into later. So if I may, move on to the next slide. This next slide shows volume of tests per week. Last week, our volume of testing increased a bit, which is really great. However, I do want to mention that nationally, we are seeing a dropping trend in testing. And Oregon and Deshute County are no exceptions to that. Positivity rates increased to around 7%, a bit of an uptick, almost 1.5% uptick since the previous week. We did have a testing event last week, and around nearly 150 people were tested. We still don't have the results for that event. As soon as we receive them, maybe perhaps by next week, we'll make sure to share them with you. I mentioned earlier that we have free testing this week. It's happening today from 9:00 to 2:00 at Ben Lepine School down at Wall Street, and we're going to have another one next week.
Nahad, why would it be taking a week to get the answers for that? That seems so untimely. I mean, really and truly. If people thought enough to get the test, I would think that we should be able to get the answer in a couple of days, shouldn't we? If testing is dropping off.
Yeah, Commissioner, you're right. I mean, the PCR test which we're using should give us the results in two days. Now, what I said is I don't have the results necessarily for the data that I'm presenting, the slide I'm presenting. The individuals may have been contacted already if they had tested, if they were diagnosed as positive. So individual-level data may have been made available, however, I don't have the aggregate data to present here for you. And that could be a reflection of the enormous pressure right now on the laboratory, especially the state laboratory because of the rising number of cases.
Nahad, you know, some months ago, when COVID was surging, there was a huge amount of testing happening. And it seemed like, you know, labs and supplies were bottlenecking to some extent. Do we have any concerns about, you know, we're in the fourth wave right now. We can see in our own case numbers and test positivity that that's happening. Do we have any concerns about the testing system capacity being strained again during this fourth wave? Or is there so much testing capacity at this point that it's really just more an issue of people going to get tested?
Yeah, yeah, very valid question, Commissioner. You're right. Early on, certainly demand outweighed supply, and there were some constraints in the supply chain which prevented us to be efficient and reach equilibrium in that process. What I know from the current dynamics is that supply is definitely outweighing the demand. There are reasons related to demand, some of which are around hesitance in even finding out about the results and the consequences of the results, for example, quarantine or time off from work. And that has certainly impacted people's willingness to go and find out. So it is mostly demand-driven. As cases go up, generally speaking, the cases plus the close contacts, when we reach out to them, we encourage them to go get tested, and that helps drive up the testing volume. However, right now, because we're in a surge modality and the case numbers outweigh the capacity that we have, we are really relying on the positive cases to reach out to their close contacts and let them know about, you know, getting tested. And that's not very efficient, as you can imagine. A lot of the situations we're facing is people basically being in parties of dozens of people, maybe 50 people, who are coming across those scenarios, and they don't know exactly who was around them. And they don't know the 50 people or so, so it's difficult for them to also reach out to their close contacts during those gatherings and let them know. So there are multiple factors. I would say most of it related to the demand side.
Thank you.
Okay, this next slide is the regional capacity in terms of our hospitalization and hospital admissions, hospital beds, basically ICU beds and beds. And then this has always been sort of the key metric for us, and it remains so, especially now because it also feeds into the risk-based framework, as you are aware. So this is the St. Charles Health System Hospitalization. As of this morning, we have 19 admissions in the hospital system. 12 of those admissions are from Deshute County. And as of yesterday, ever hospitalized stands at 236.
Nahad, are you able to, or do you have this data, and are you able to share this data on the ages of the people who are hospitalized? Are we, you know, early on, it seemed like the vast majority of the people who were hospitalized were older. Are we seeing more hospitalizations across the age spectrum now?
Yeah, I'm going to give you a semi-informed response, but if I may encourage the commission to perhaps consider inviting St. Charles colleagues maybe to one of the next meetings to give an update. I think the community will be pleased with knowing more about the patterns that our St. Charles colleagues are also observing. Why I say semi-informed, because my information may be as of two, three weeks ago. I tried to actually reach my colleague this morning from St. Charles to get updated information. I couldn't reach him, so that's on me. Now, what I understand from him, even if it's not statistically significant, we are seeing a shift in terms of the younger age admissions. I think, if I remember correctly, it was around seven years. On average, the admissions are around seven years younger. What we are also seeing Uh, what we are also seeing is uh uh a longer length of stay in hospitals. Again, I don't know if this is statistically significant or not, but uh certainly um we are seeing uh um some level of um um uh some level of change also in length of stay. Why is that important? Well, generally, younger um admissions, uh younger folks who are admitted uh tend to be healthier and uh they're not subjected to maybe the severity of disease that uh one might expects will expect for older population. But if they are staying longer in hospital and if they do go into ICU care and ventilation, that could speak, and again, this is not confirmed, so I just want to be clear on this, it could speak to maybe the circulation of the more severe variants in our community. And unfortunately for us to have confirmation on that, we would need a more robust, maybe laboratory system, surveillance system to capture um the realities that uh might be happening in our community. And we're not there yet, although I do want to acknowledge that there is great effort being made in that regard.
Thank you.
So Nahad, do you have the total then of Deshutes County hospitalized people? I know it was at two twenty five last Wednesday. Um, do we add twelve to it?
Ever hospitalized as of um twentieth, uh what is today's date, twenty first? So as of yesterday, Commissioner, was two hundred and thirty six.
One last question about hospitalizations, Nahad. So um we we have seen in the past this sort of trailing effect. You know, the cases go up and then the hospitalizations go up a a short time afterwards. And um our our ca- our case numbers are certainly still on the rise in uh Deshutes County the the last week or so. Um, would that uh would you uh anticipate or expect that our hospitalizations are going to continue to increase uh tracking the the rise in cases over the last week?
Yeah, again, another great question, and I think again, uh my colleagues from St. Charles would definitely shed more light on this. Let me just share with you what I do know. Um, there are a couple of things. One is that certainly there's the hospitalization is still a lagging indicator. Usually it takes maybe um five to ten days after we acquire the virus, somewhere around that range. Uh, for the person, if they need to be, uh if they reach that sort of level of severity for them to be hospitalized. Um, uh however, this virus is kind of defying logic at times, and the models that uh my colleagues at St. Charles share with us uh don't seem to sort of match reality at times. That's sort of my understanding. Their expectation and what they're seeing in reality don't always match. So for example, and this could be a reflection of maybe younger folks who are acquiring the virus and getting admitted. We should be seen based on the case numbers, um as our case numbers now reflect maybe our case numbers from a few months ago, a couple of months ago. And during that time, at sort of equal level of cases, we had maybe, let's say, twenty to twenty five hospital admissions. Uh, what we're seeing now is roughly half of that at the same level of case um uh case numbers, but admissions being um a bit lower. And that could be, again, reflection of younger population, healthier, but we really don't know how the variants are playing a role. I think there are right now three identified variants uh in the U.S. circulating. There are more globally. Two of those variants I know um have been di- um have been um uh isolated in uh Oregon, uh but uh really how much they're circulating is yet to be determined.
So uh with this information, thank you very much for providing what you know. Uh, I would uh ask, maybe you can help us uh make the invitation for possibly Dr. Fossett and also Michael Johnson from St. Charles for next week. It'll be a good time to really know what's going on uh from their point of view.
Definitely, yeah. I mean, the Michael uh, Dr. Johnson definitely has all these data, and I'd be happy to uh reach out to him um and and make sure that um uh hopefully he can make himself available
Yeah.
for next week.
If you can do that, that'd be appreciated.
Happy to do that.
Thanks, Nahad.
Let me just take note of that. These are really good questions, and I do think uh some sort of a periodic update uh by our colleagues from St. Charles can really be informative uh for everyone, so uh I will try our best, but I think there are more in the know and they can be more informative.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. My last couple of slides, hopefully um I can go quickly so I can give the floor to my colleague Molly. Uh, this is the risk-based framework for the counties. Uh, as indicated, we are at the high-risk level. Um, and as I think discussed last week, uh the extreme uh high risk will be more of a statewide decision uh based on hospital admission and uh fif- I think some level of maybe fifteen percent uh change uh in one week to another. Um, so we are remaining in this high-risk level, which certainly impacts our movements and economic uh activities. Now, I mentioned earlier, there there is a bit of maybe um confusion or perhaps the more need for information around um differentials between COVID nineteen and allergies, symptomatic differentials. Um, certainly, I'm not a clinician, though I play one on TV once in a while, so I will kind of uh wa- uh walk through a few things to keep in mind for our community members. One is that uh in terms of the de- you know, the differential, uh the the differences between allergies and COVID nineteen. So if if one is dealing with fever or chills, uh it's most likely um a disease related perhaps to respiratory disease related to COVID nineteen versus, let's say, allergy. So if if fever or chill is there, it's most likely not related to allergy. Body aches are also the differentials for COVID nineteen. Loss of taste or smell are also differential for uh nineteen for COVID nineteen. On the other hand, sneezing and itchy and watery eyes, which my poor kiddos are dealing with right now, are more differentiated for allergies. So these are some of the symptoms to keep in mind, but most importantly, if you're dealing with any of these symptoms, just to be sure, do reach out to your primary care providers and uh follow up on that so that uh you can keep you yourself and your family safe. So there is no magic bullet here in terms of how we address this. We have the tools, we have the knowledge, we know the decisions we need to make. Uh, certainly, uh if we're eligible for vaccines, uh we should do our due diligence, make sure we're comfortable, and then we get vaccinated. We get vaccinated for ourselves, for our families, and for our communities, and it helps us move towards some level of normalcy. In addition to that, as we approach that level of normalcy, still uh there are some uh practical measures that we can undertake, such as um maintaining distance, uh especially amongst those who are not vaccinated. But in general, amongst uh everyone, just to be on the safe side, because one never knows if we have had uh um uh sort of conversion, uh once vaccinated, and we are truly protected or not, or we could be carrier still. Um, certainly, wearing masks. Uh, I I don't think wearing masks is gonna completely go away as like even I'm talking about myself, my family. I think there are gonna be scenarios in the future, even post-COVID, but I think wearing a mask makes sense. So uh I think wearing a mask, especially right now, is really critical. Being outdoors more than indoors because it dilutes the viral load um and and helps uh with the airflow and circulation. And then uh hygiene um uh practices are also critical. So these are some of the uh key, I think, uh practical tools that we have available, low cost and can help protect us, our families, and our communities. So with that.
Can I ask you a question just for you to clarify? We did not go back to extreme because of a hospitalization number. Was that our St. Charles number that we're at two thirty six, and if we go to three hundred? That's that's a terrible sign. What is, what number are we looking at?
Yeah, thanks for the for uh for that uh bringing that up and the clarification, Commissioner. So this is a statewide wide metric that has been introduced. And it's really COVID nineteen positive patients occupying three hundred hospital beds or more at the state level. Um, so that's that's really uh would they look at the aggregate numbers and see what the state level capacity is.
And it doesn't matter if they're in ICU or just regular COVID patients. They're all counted?
Yeah, it doesn't differentiate, Commissioner.
The one the one other thing I was going to mention when we were looking at the uh the risk levels across the state is uh we just heard that based on numbers, there's I I believe ten additional counties that are that are looking like they're headed to high-risk category to join us uh pretty soon, so. Um, so that that map that we looked at that had all that green on it, it it, I'm not sure if that's um uh that that uh as as those numbers get updated, there might be a whole lot more orange on that map.
Jefferson and Crook, it was mentioned they're gonna go to, yeah, um, high level.
I I I agree. I mean, misery likes company, right? So certainly, you're right, Commissioner, in that other counties are um going to be in that level as well. And then uh just Commissioner, there, generally speaking, what we are seeing from data is roughly around twenty percent of the admissions, hospital admissions tend to uh reach the severity level of IC- needing ICU care. So I'm sure that number is factored in to the three hundred plus um and and accounts for the ICU capacity in the state. Okay, so if you allow me, I'm gonna give the floor to my colleague Molly. Um, I'm here as well in case there are follow-up questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, good news. We received uh much more vaccine for this week, so we have uh twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy vaccinations that we will be giving um at the fairgrounds and and also in the community a little bit. Uh, about eight thousand of the vaccinations will be second doses at the fairgrounds, and a little over four thousand will be first doses at the fairgrounds, and then we have some doses that will be uh sharing with community partners to uh get out to our Latinx population to continue to help um vaccinate that population. So we're excited that we're seeing um higher numbers of vaccines coming our way from the state, and we hope that that will continue. Go to the next slide. Um, this slide just shows that we continue to be um one of the counties um that is uh has the one of the best uh rates for vaccination in our county. We have people um currently in the series, about twenty seven thousand, who are currently in the series of being vaccinated and fifty five thousand uh who are fully vaccinated, and we're just at about forty three percent of our population uh vaccinated in Deshutes County. So our numbers just keep to go up, and uh we're we're doing very well. Head, Nahad. Uh, so just a reminder, Nahad talked about this earlier, but uh we still have our pre-registration for the mass vaccination clinic. Fastest and easiest way to get pre-registered is through uh that website there at the bottom, Central Oregon COVID vaccine dot com. Um, we have significantly streamlined that application or that pre-registration form, I guess I should say, uh because now everybody sixteen and over is um qualifies to get their vaccine. So really, it just asks for your name and your date of birth, um some uh some stuff around ethnicity. Um, and then you get on the the list, and they'll get the vaccine out to you and all uh our vaccine links out to you. So I'll talk with you about that a little bit later in this presentation. Go ahead, Nahad. Uh, so this is also just other areas that people can get their vaccinations. So really, we want to keep our mass vaccination clinic open right now because it's the quickest way and most efficient way for us to get um a large part of our community vaccinated. However, there are some um individuals who would prefer to go to their pharmacy um or to some of these providers. So pharmacies throughout Central Oregon um do receive vaccine. Uh, Fred Meyer specifically is getting uh vaccines from the state. If people are interested in uh going to a pharmacy, they can go on to vaccinefinder.org and enter in uh their zip code, and then it will show them what uh vaccines are uh close to them in different pharmacies, and there's a number of pharmacies in the area. And then Mosaic Medical and Lapine Community Health Center also either receive direct allotments from the state or uh from the feds, um and they are focusing on their patient population and our more vulnerable population to make sure that we're getting to um all of our population here in Deshutes County. Once you do go on and pre-register, um you fill out that form. It's it's quick and easy at this point in time. You really want to try to do that on your computer there. If you do it on your phone, there's sometimes some issues with date of birth, um and that has caused um some frustration for people. So uh really, if you can do it through a computer, that's great. If you don't have access to a computer, you can call our COVID hotline. Um, and they will help you get set up uh with pre-registration, and then when this a link is sent, they will call you and get you set up for your appointment. Um, so if you do register yourself on your computer, this is the the uh all-good sign that you're gonna see at the end. So if you get this message, you're all set with this confirmation code. This means that you have pre-registered and you're on the list, and you should be receiving a link, the email or telephone uh uh your phone um when a vaccine is available for you. So if we have five thousand people that are signed up and we get four thousand vaccinations, we'll send out four thousand links. Um, and then that other thousand will go out either after we processed all those links, and if there's any that uh we're not um taken advantage of um or went the following week when we get vaccinations. So don't worry if you don't get a link right away. Um, just know that if you get this confirmation, you are all set.
So Molly, now that um it's open to sixteen years and older, uh is it basically first come, first served, or is it more triaged still?
At this point, it is first come, first served. So really, getting your name on that pre-registration list is important, and then we just we just take you as you come. Um, in relation to the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, thank you for pointing that out, Nahad. Uh, if you are sixteen or you're seventeen, you can receive Pfizer as your uh vaccine, and so it's really, really important. When you get your vaccine link and you go in to sign up, it it will show you the dates that we are running Pfizer clinics, and you want to make sure that you're choosing a Pfizer clinic so that you're getting the appropriate vaccine for your age. Uh, so when you get your email, uh you'll get an email from do not reply at St. Charles Medical, S C M C dot org. Um, please be checking your spam um folders because sometimes these types of addresses will go to your spam folder. So I would encourage everyone, if if you've put your name on this list, just check daily uh that spam folder as well as your regular folder and and your texts to make sure that you uh do get the link. Uh, when you get the link, it expires after forty-eight hours. So you do want to be on top of that and go in and schedule that appointment. Um, but be assured that if you get a link, there is vaccine for you, um and so as long as you sign up within that forty-eight hours, you should be able to sign up directly for an appointment. Um, please know that people will not be calling you and asking for credit cards or social security numbers. There has been a little bit of confusion out at the clinic, so just want to verify or clarify this. Insurance uh is not required. Identification is not required. Social security numbers are not required. Um, if you have insurance, you can bring that and uh give that to St. Charles. St. Charles is the one that uh uh processes insurance, whereas the county do not. Um, but if you don't have your insurance, um and and you're on Medicare, let's say, you forgot to bring your card, uh that you can give a social security number if you want to for them to access your insurance, but you do not have to. Um, so if you see that anywhere written on a form or whatnot, that is not a request for your social security, and uh please know that uh none of that uh is required. So, uh you know, last week I talked about our volunteers, and I think it's important, you know, we 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 talk about it's our charge um as public health uh to protect the health of our population, and really, part of that is um all of the people in our community that are helping out. And so last week, we thanked our volunteers, and this week I wanted to uh thank our people who uh our our Latinx community. Um, we have an incredible uh leadership community out there, and and these people specifically have been extremely helpful in helping us um as an incident command and as a county to improve our inclusivity and our access to um vaccination and PPE and all all sorts of things throughout this pandemic. Um, so I'm gonna keep this slide up, or Nahad's, uh while I talk about this, because I really wanted to um point out these individuals, Haley Rish uh and Elizabeth Rantoria, and Elizabeth Sanchez are all individuals who have been involved in our incident management team, and they have really um helped advocate for the Latinx population and really helped to um improve our response uh to to this uh population and and just help to con- continue improvement um in our in our response to this population. And then also just the concilio. Um, this is a group of leaders within the Latinx community. Um, I I want to give a huge shout out to Haley Rush, Rish, who um coordinated with um uh the two other Elizabeths there to put this concilio together. Um, and they have been uh very instrumental in in helping us understand how we can reach out to this community in a meaningful way. us understand how we can reach out to this community in a meaningful way, and how we can continue to improve in our response to this community. The concilio especially has helped to spread the word about vaccinations within the Latinx community. They've come up with really outside-of-the-box ideas for us. Maybe it was very understood by them, but they helped us to understand why responding in certain ways can engage this community more. They've helped in word-changing, removing words, et cetera, just to help us be inclusive. So some of the things that we have implemented because of this group of people and their continued advocacy is bilingual staffing in our contract tracing and call centers, Spanish-speaking case managers. We contract with community-based organizations to have Spanish-speaking case managers for individuals who have been exposed to COVID or have to quarantine and need some extra assistance. Live interpretation of this presentation at the BACC, as well as communications involving videos and social media, Spanish Facebook page, so that we can communicate out and reach the community in that way. In addition, they helped us request a FEMA assessment for accessibility at our mass vaccination clinic. And then they just have been really instrumental in helping all of us collaborate, the county and Mosaic and VIM and Latino Community Association, to assess how we can reach into this community and to also get vaccinations out to the community, especially through Mosaic and VIM with their partnership with the Latino Community Association. And where we're going, you know, we constantly do need to improve, and we're constantly looking at improvement, and we appreciate so much these partnerships to help us see where we can improve. So some of the areas where we're going, we are hiring 10 Promotoras de Salud, and those individuals are individuals who are embedded in the Latino community, who can work within that community to help spread the word about vaccinations, to help with vaccination confidence, and if people choose or want to get a vaccination, to help connect them to get those vaccinations. We're developing a vaccine confidence campaign in Spanish, and we're identifying unique ways to get out to the community, in the community, to get vaccine to the Latino community. And then finally, we're also hiring a full-time language access coordinator to help with all of these efforts. So just again, thank you to our partners for continuing to help guide us and support us in that work. And then just a little bit more about access and inclusion, just for our community to know, if you need a ride to the mass vaccination clinic, there are transportation options available. They're here on the slide, but Dial-A-Ride, Cascade East Transit, you can call, set up an appointment 24 hours in advance, make sure you set it up as a separate return, and they can get you out to the mass vaccination clinic, and our staff will help you get back to the ride when your ride comes to pick you up. We have all language access at all of our clinics for up to 35 languages, either via video or Spanish live interpretation, as well as sign language and assisted listening devices. And then also for our people who maybe have mobility issues, have a difficult time walking, we have wheelchairs and golf carts, et cetera, to get you into the building safely and quickly to get your vaccination. Go ahead. So again, if you have any questions, the best way to get your questions answered is to go on to deschutes.org, this website there. There's a frequently asked question page. You can also email ourhealthservices@deschutes.org. When you email that email, you should get a response with our frequently asked questions, which will hopefully answer your question. But if not, someone will be answering your email as well. And you also can call that COVID vaccine hotline. I would just encourage people to try these other options first, because we're trying to keep that line open for people who don't have access to computers, who truly need assistance by the phone. And then we just want to encourage people to volunteer. You know, as we get further and further into this pandemic, we're all working really hard, and people do get tired. And so we want to keep our volunteers refreshed. And so adding more volunteers will just help spread out that work. And it truly is an amazing opportunity and a fun place to be. So we appreciate our volunteers. We appreciate our community partners in the Latinx community for continuing to help with this effort.
Thank you very much for the updates. I know that herd immunity, quick and decisive herd immunity is the goal right now, and we want to really advocate for everyone to be safe. You know, this is a worldwide pandemic event. There's a lot of science and knowledge about what we're doing here. And, you know, I'm really proud of the efforts happening in Deschutes County, you know, really doubling down on the outreach at this point in time and keeping everybody motivated. So thank you so much.
Molly, this, there are, like, I have been in touch with people who said that they had tried to sign up to volunteer back in the beginning, and, you know, there was such an overwhelming response then, they actually weren't needed. And I want to encourage those people to try to sign up to volunteer now. Is the, what is, can you remind me what the pathway is to get people plugged in as volunteers?
Can you bring that back up, Nahad? I want to make sure that it's, yeah, so deschutes.org, public health. Where'd it go? Volunteer.com.
Okay. There it is.
Great.
And Commissioner, thank you for saying that. There, I think at the beginning also, some people volunteered, they went through St. Charles, and it really is a different avenue now. So even if they completed an application with St. Charles, they should reapply through our current application. We've streamlined that application to make it pretty quick and easy for people.
Great. Well, we can put the word back out.
Okay, thank you so much. Good update this week. Get those vaccines, keep those vaccines flowing.
Yeah, I wonder, Commissioners, if for our volunteers and to entice more community members to volunteer, I wonder if there is anything with maybe the Deschute County emblem that the county could offer them. I don't know if your office is able to sweeten the deal in this regard. If so, I think it could go a long way. I know for sure that I would jump on that, just to have something with the county on it.
Oh, Nahad.
What kind of, we, if you can put together a schwag committee to make some recommendations to us on what kind of, what kind of t-shirts or pins or whatever, mugs would entice people to volunteer, we can, you know, consider those things.
What about our fabulous masks that say "Deschutes" on them? They're very stylish, black, white lettering. They're nice. Maybe Whitney ordered a couple thousand extra.
Awesome. Problem solved. I'm sure we're going to get a deluge of volunteers now.
Commissioners, we actually do have an inventory already of Deschutes County logoed items that we use for employee recognition. Whitney is in charge of that, so we'll ask her to be in touch with volunteer coordinators, and we'll see if there's something that we can do there. Assuming we're not stepping over the line of undue compensation, but I think the items are nominal in terms of cost.
Something that's like, event-specific commemorative might, you know, might appeal to people more, though. It's, you know, it's like going to a concert and getting the, you know, the concert, you know, the concert t-shirt that talks about the specific, you know, event that you went to. I wonder if, you know, if there's something that we could consider doing that, that would kind of recognize the role that people had played in the vaccination effort.
Well, you have a brilliant mind on your side with Whitney Hill, so I'm sure this can be sorted out. Just a way to recognize the great sacrifices that our community members, our volunteers are making, and just something also to remember years down the line when we share our narratives with our grandchildren and friends. So this is just a trigger for that.
Great idea. Thanks, Nahad.
I have a friend who's been volunteering. I cannot believe how much. And she has to get there at 7:00 in the morning. It's an enormous commitment, but people really do love the sense of community there. That was something that I really picked up on and appreciated when I was there about a week or two ago. So it's, you know, it is a sense of community. Thank you for the great job you're doing. And I don't know, maybe, I think Whitney should have some nice masks.
You know, if we did, if you did this right, I could even imagine it helping impact vaccine hesitancy out in the community. You know, if we give people really cool, like, mass vax clinic volunteer trucker hats or something like that, you know, it might, you know, and those are showing up around town, it might sway some additional people to consider getting vaccinated.
Well, yeah, we'll start off with our review of the situation and see what can be offered. Great idea. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for inviting us. Have a wonderful day.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
So another other item that came up, fair association, fair board agreement for the future.
Yes. Okay, so that was very exciting a week ago, Monday night, when I was at the fair association meeting. They agreed unanimously. I thought I said something about it last Wednesday. Maybe I didn't. But in the appreciation of all the negotiations, getting a brand-new agreement, I actually volunteered to bring the association dinner next month when we have our meeting. So hopefully, I will have probably 25 people showing up for a dinner for, congratulations for the plans they're putting ahead. Our fair director is clearly defining all the different parameters. We can do a 50% fair, a 70% fair, but remember last year, we did actually have the auction for the 4H and FFA kids, so critical for their success, for their plans, for their future. And that, of course, is, I believe, going forward, irregardless of all those other things that the fair board is dealing with. I think the theme of it this year is going, for our fair, is going to be back in the saddle. So, yes, back in the saddle.
Limp that out too early if it's not ready.
No, no, no. They announced it at the meeting.
Or is this last year's theme, too? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no. No, I think it's a new theme, back in the saddle, yes.
So the fairgrounds is the people's fairgrounds, and we think of it as an enterprise fund, its own income and expense. Our new director, over a year now, Jeff Heinz, is doing a great job out there in his second year, I guess we would say. So then the fair associations, our community-based organization advocating for the world's greatest, the world's greatest fair. And the fair board runs that facility as a policy level all year long. So the agreement is in place now, kind of a legal document defining the fact that fair association runs the county fair. The county is the fiscal agent behind that, the budget coordinator, professional services. But man, do we have a good time out at the county fair when it's happening. It is a shame we missed it last year, and we'll sure see what we can do this next year.
But the good news was, we did continue with the auction for the kids.
Yep.
So they raised about $1 million, and incredibly important. So you can't feed an animal all year and not be able to sell it.
I think it's great that all of these folks who are so passionate about the fair and the fairgrounds now have a framework to work under and to partner under to make great things happen now.
Oh, yeah. Looking forward to it. And it's a great partnership and real positive. So another note for myself, next week at about this time, I have an East Cascades Works quarterly board meeting. So that's with Commissioners up and down the center of the state. So I think that does start at 11:30. I'll notify them if I'm going to be a little late. So just to let you know that I may be fidgety to leave at about this time next week. So we'll see how that fits into the schedule. And if I join them at noon, that may be fine, too. And then, yeah, there's some discussion about Monday's board meeting. As I say, I won't be available for a board meeting next Monday afternoon, so if it's two Commissioners or a few agenda items, that'll be determined here by the end of the week. Anything else? So at this time, we do have an executive session scheduled, a follow-up.
It actually said after lunch, but can we do it this morning?
Well, that's my thought. Yeah, that's kind of my thought process. I don't know, maybe, yeah, if it's after lunch, that's fine, too. I guess I didn't.
No, you can do it.
I just see the time available, yeah.
Just approximate. You're not held to that other than for public hearings.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and as I say, I kind of thought that in my mind. If we're not on the same page, let me know. But if we're available, we could do that, just knowing that we have time.
There are key participating people.
Well, and that's my thought. I mean, if we can't get it together right now, that's fine, too. Let's make sure we're on the same page. So is Kathleen available? And what's the item 6602?
A.
A. Okay, yeah, so I think we're all on the same page. So we're going to go to an executive session today, 1926602A.
I mean we always can, but I'm just thinking what's the next step as a board? You'll be able to process this kind of re-document what we talked about maybe.
for this. I mean we always can, but I'm just thinking what's the next step as a board? You'll be able to process this kind of re-document what we talked about maybe.